Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 1st, 2015 Halton District School Board Public Meeting. And I won't say it's April Fool's Day. No, did I? Okay. It is no joke. I'd like to welcome everyone, and thank you for coming. I'd like to remind everyone, if they have something that makes noise, they could please mute it or turn it off. We are being livestreamed, so your video voice recorded. So, can I have a motion to approve the agenda tonight? Trustee Pappan and trustee Reynolds, any discussion on our agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, thank you. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest tonight? Seeing none, we have no delegations and no presentations. So, we're already up to our minutes of the meeting for March 25th, 2015. Do I have a mover? Vice Chair Collard and trustee Gray, is there any comments on our minutes from March 25th? Trustee L. Harrison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the bottom of page six, there's just a sentence with no end. David DiWali indicated that they were anticipated tomorrow and would be intently reviewed and incorporated into policy with opportunity for... Dun dun dun. Consultation, thank you.
So, with that small change, all those in favor of approving the minutes? That passes unanimously. Oh, sorry, the seconder was... It was moved by trustee Pappan and seconded by trustee Reynolds. Do we have any business from private to approve tonight?
Not this evening.
Thank you. We're up to our order paper. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the order paper tonight? No, we're moving right along at a rapid pace. We could be out of here in, what, 10 minutes?
Shh, don't drink.
Sorry. Okay, so we're up to our only action item. The Policy Bylaw and Governance Recommendation: Trustee Expenses, Schedule 1, from trustee Graves on page 11 of your board package. And I will read it out. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board's trustee expense policy, Schedule 1, be approved as amended to report 15048 with a retroactive effect date of December 1st, 2014. Moved by trustee Graves, seconded by trustee Harvey Hope. Do we have any debate... Sorry, discussion or questions or comments on this tonight? I seeing none. Just a minute, I gotta get to the right topic. So, all those in favor? Just a minute, it won't be. So, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't push the button fast enough. Just while it... When it gets posted to the website, that Schedule 1, the explanation that CIO Smith gave us a couple of weeks ago, what the difference was between BlackBerry and iPhone for data, that one line of "there is a difference," and it's not that BlackBerry is just that much cheaper, it's actually a difference in service level. Maybe it could be clarified so that it's not like a backlash for Apple versus BlackBerry.
Thank you. We're now up to the favorite part of our evening, our student trustee reports. Trustee Schneider and Sahai.
Okay, so yeah, yesterday, we had a student senate meeting, and a lot of our discussion this year has been on technology with our student senators. So, we actually had some members from the ICT Council, Advisory Council, and our board reach out to us. So, we had Sean Clark and Lynn Wisnewski from, I think she's at Library Services. So, they actually had a chance to sit down. We kind of had some sort of like panel discussion with the students, and it was really, really good. They got feedback that was really, really constructive for them, and they were surprised because they have never heard of senate before. So, it was good. They said they really, really liked the feedback.
Also, from our research that we did at the beginning of the year, some of the students for the technology portion brought in their stats for that. So, they liked that a lot. We also had our meeting for the student trustee elections yesterday, and we just described details of the position, details of when it's going to happen and how it's going to happen. Yeah, and so, the senate meeting was very good. Our conference is coming up very quickly on April 28th at the Sheridan, which is confirmed, and we have our speakers, and everything's looking good. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for our student trustees? Trustee L. Harrison? No? Okay. The... I have a question, were there many interested in running for student trustees? And I know, because I know the two of you are planning on running again.
Yeah, so, yesterday at the meeting, we only had three candidates come, but I believe there are five additional. So, there's me and Sophie, and then just five other ones planning on running.
Thank you. And thank you for your report. We're now up to notices of motion. Do we have any notices of motion tonight? Seeing none, we're on to our action item for April 15th. For our school year calendar, associate Miller, report 15051. It fits him better than the other. Welcome, associate Miller, when you're ready.
I'm kind of used to it now, so... I thought I should have been sitting with Gillian, being the associate Miller. It sounds like a legal thing. Anyway, trustees, you have the school year calendar in front of you. Couple of things, and it's in the report. One of the trustees sent me some questions, and I answered those, so I don't know if you want to repeat those, so I can answer them in public. This is in alignment with our co-terminus board, so there'll be... There won't be a cost to us around busing when, in previous years, at times, we've been out of alignment with the co-terminus board, and there was a financial cost around busing. We are in alignment. And other than two PD days, we're in alignment on the PD days with our secondary panel. And that's because the elementary has a report card day and so on. The only other comment I would make is I've been asked this question on a page where we have the proposed school year calendar that would go to the schools, and it's got the list of dates. There's a date there. There's two dates. For semester one is November 26th, and for semester two is May 5th, called full disclosure. So that you know what full disclosure is, that's the date in which grade 12 students, if they drop a course prior to that date, it does not appear on a transcript. If they drop the course after that date, it does appear on their transcript. And apparently, we're not absolutely positive of this, there are implications for when they apply for universities if a course appears twice, because then the university can figure out that they actually did it twice, and they upgraded it. So, that's why that date's there. So, we generally haven't sent that out to parents. We've just done it within the schools, but this year, we'll be getting it out to parents, so parents can be aware of it as well. So, I'll leave the questions out. And I do want to thank trustee Al Harrison for her work on the committee and all the other committee members, all the... Our partners, the union partners, and other people in the board. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments, questions for our speaker tonight? Trustee Harvey Hope?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to associate director Miller. Just wanted to get you to reiterate the status of exam review days, because when we look at the calendar, you know, you look where the PD days are, and you look where the exam days are, and often, students don't realize there's a day in between that they're supposed to be in the building. And so, just to reiterate that that blank day between exam and PD is actually a school day for students, right?
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope. I would suggest that the students know that that day is there. Some choose not to attend, but exam review day, if you'll recall, while some of you were not on the board at the time, in the previous board, we reviewed that day. And now, on exam review day, attendance is taken, schedules are given out, and I would not say it's absolutely perfect, but it's a bona fide return day in many of our schools where teachers will go over the exams. It's also an opportunity for students to finish up their final summative and/or meet with teachers. So, it is a scheduled day, attendance is taken. It's usually a half day, and the administration on that day is also doing promotion meetings, so the teachers are all in the building so that they can meet with teachers if there's a question around promotion.
Thank you. Our next speaker is vice chair Collard.
Just had a question about the full disclosure day. For a student that's not in grade 12, taking a grade 12 course, that would also apply?
To chair Amos, to trustee Collard, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Gerbence?
Thank you, through you, Chair. Just a very quick question, pending approval tonight. When does it go on the website for public? I've been getting questions.
It's not being approved tonight, it's not being approved till the 15th of April.
But the package is on the website.
It is, they're already in the package. Director DiWali?
We need to be a little careful on this. The school year calendar is approved by the board and then sent to the ministry, and it's the ministry that gives final approval. Very seldom would the ministry make an alteration, except if you breached one of the rules, we didn't have sufficient days, we occupied a day that should not be occupied for instruction, something like that. We don't anticipate any blocks, but it's not official until the ministry approves it. Me.
But it is already on the website in the board package, so parents can go to it pending approval. Our next speaker is trustee Graves.
Through you, Chair, to associate director Miller. It never occurred to me until you brought up the full disclosure days, but you explained it very well to us. Just wondering if parents and students already have a good idea of what full disclosure means, or if there should perhaps be an explanation there, something to the effect of the last day to drop a course without it appearing on the transcript.
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Graves. I would say the students are well aware of it, their teachers talk about it, their admin talk about it, guidance talk about it. Parents may not be as much, so that's good advice. We could certainly put some kind of explanation there that parents could see.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, to associate director Miller. I just wanted to reflect on the process and the meeting that I attended and the subsequent emails that you sent out. It's my, I guess, observation that most, if not all, of the concerns that were raised have been dealt with in the calendar that's in front of you. I would also reflect that at the board level, there's so many days and numbers that have to be accounted for. There's very little wiggle room when you actually come down to putting the days on the calendar. So, I just, I wanted to thank you for your leadership. I've watched as, I guess, email concerns were raised, and you were able to kind of manage them all within the process, and this is the result. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Reynolds?
Thank you, through the chair. Just wanted to thank the committee for, as a parent, I am, you know, getting this out as quickly as possible is very welcome, especially with people planning their summer and their caregiving, so I really appreciate that effort. And I see there is a huge committee, and I just wanted, if you could, share your perspective of how the calendar reflects religious observances and how that was taken into account. I do see you have a diversity person on the committee, so if you could perhaps elaborate, that'd be great.
Sure. Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Reynolds. The diversity person did speak up to make us aware of a few days. We... There were no... That's hard to say. I wouldn't say there were no conflicts. There are some conflicts for Yom Kippur and that, but the students are permitted, as our staff, to take those days off anyway, so... But she did speak up and made us aware of those days, and at the end of it, she felt that the calendar reflected as best as it can, because it would be difficult to manage them all. A calendar that was equitable, shall we say, so...
Thank you. And as we have no more speakers, this will come back in our next board meeting for approval. So, I'd like to ask associate Miller to stay there. Because the next item is graduation rates, which is a presentation. And I believe that the PowerPoint was sent earlier today, so trustees have it. And... I'd like to welcome Tim Sidai to help associate Miller with his presentation. Thank you. When you're ready.
Evening, trustees. Tim will walk us through this. We apologize for the lateness of you getting this PowerPoint, but as I said last week, it was embargoed, and it was embargoed until this morning. So, our intent was to get this out to you last week, but soon as Tim and I had gone through it, we sent it off to you guys to make sure that it was what we were going to present tonight. And the reason... One of the reasons for the delay was there has been... There was a change in the way that the Ministry of Education calculated the grad rate. That change was prior to this one, we had to include all students who left the board or sadly had passed away. They have changed their calculation so that we do not have to include students who have left the province or those that, again, have passed away. So, it changed our results somewhat, and I would just like to thank Tim, because he had this ready to go last week, because he predicted what the change was. So, without further ado, I'll pass it on to Tim.
Thanks, Stuart. I'm pleased to join you tonight to share the graduation rates. My intent is to take you through a brief presentation that outlines the definitions and the methodology used to calculate the graduation rate and displays historical four- and five-year rates for the Halton District School Board. The percentage of graduates from a board, or graduation rate, is an important indicator of student success. In conjunction with a variety of other student success measures, it can be used to inform initiatives such as the Board Improvement Plan for Student Achievement. In the province of Ontario, secondary students require 30 credits, success in the Ontario Secondary School Literacy Test, and 40 hours of community involvement to earn an Ontario Secondary School diploma, or OSSD. Throughout this presentation, graduation refers to attainment of the OSSD. The grade nine cohort that is established using the ministry's methodology remains fixed over time. There are no new entrants to this cohort after the grade nine year. Students are tracked over time to determine the graduation rates. The grade nine cohort is comprised of students who meet all of the criteria listed in the table displayed here. Students who do not meet these criteria either belong to a different grade nine cohort or are excluded from the graduation rate calculation. It is important to note, as associate director Miller referenced, that in the ministry's methodology, deceased students and students who left the province and did not return are removed from the grade nine cohort. The ministry's method of calculation has been used for all graduation rates contained in this presentation. Students included in the grade nine cohort are separated into two categories. Those that stayed in the same board and those that moved to another board in Ontario. Within each of these two categories, students are designated as graduates, non-graduates who are still enrolled in year five, or early school leavers. Non-graduates did not attain the OSSD but were still enrolled in their fifth year. Early school leavers did not attain an OSSD and were not enrolled in an Ontario school board in year five. These categories allow for a number of disaggregations of the data that you will see in the following slides. This slide shows the historical five-year graduation rate for the Halton District School Board using the ministry's cohort methodology. The dates along the bottom of the chart show the year in which the students were in grade nine. Students in the 2009-10 grade nine cohort are the most recent to have been tracked for a full five years, which finished with the 2013-14 school year. The provincial result for the 2009-10 grade nine cohort, having graduated in five years or earlier, has been added to this slide for reference. The current slide displays the historical four-year graduation rates for the Halton District School Board. The 2009-10 grade nine cohort finished its fourth year in 2012-13. The data for the 2010-11 grade nine cohort are not yet available. The provincial four-year rate has been added to this slide for reference. One disaggregation of the graduation rate data is to look at students who stayed in the Halton District School Board. We see that graduation rates are higher when we focus on students who were enrolled in HDSP for the entirety of their secondary education. The four-year graduation rates are higher as well for students who stayed in the Halton District School Board. When we look at students who stayed in the Halton District School Board and graduated or were still enrolled in year five, the percentages of the grade nine cohorts, year after year, are very high. In the 2009-10 grade nine cohort, only roughly 3% of students were early school leavers. The percentage of early leavers has dropped in each of the last four years. This concludes my part of the presentation.
Go ahead, Director DiWali.
I want to comment on the last one, because it's somewhat related to, specifically to Halton. The ministry is aware of this calculation, and it's been advocated by us. And it was advocated by us because of trustee Bauer, who was very passionate about students who entered our schools were not working towards a graduation diploma, and therefore, under their ministry method, were almost considered as dropouts. Many of these students are still in school, they're enjoying a fulfilling program and being very successful. So, I like this data very much, because it says that 90... Almost 97% of our students are either... Have either graduated or are continuing in a successful program. Since I put this out, at least... At least eight or nine other boards have asked for these slides, and they're going to repeat that same kind of calculation. And because I think it is important to make a statement that our students who are not in credit programs are nonetheless successful.
Associate Miller?
And I would just add that in a conference call a week and a half ago, Director DiWali mentioned that to the ministry, and they seemed... They had a positive response to that and said they would look into what he just said.
Is there any comments or questions or discussion on this topic tonight? I don't see any speakers, so I'm going to tell you. I just... I had looked earlier in the day at all the boards' comparison from the ministry's information, and other than York Public, we are second to them. Every... It's only the Catholic boards, which are... And the French boards, which maybe also were in the very top of what... And I'm very proud of what we're doing in our system, and I know some of that is getting the students to return to graduate. I know that is a very effective program, and it's doing good things. The fact that we're looking at all of our learners and seeing that they're being successful. I mean, I believe we have a model that the other boards should be following, and I'm very proud of what we're doing here in Halton. And I'd like to thank everyone who's involved with doing it, because it is making a difference. And all those students who are coming out and finishing school, I mean, they all feel good about themselves. When you go to commencements and graduations at the schools, they're all... When you hear what they're doing, it's just amazing. And so, thank you very much for sharing this information, because it is really good information. Is anybody... Oh, trustee Gray?
Through the chair, I agree with you. This is fabulous news, and I wonder if there's a press release planned, reaching out to our community through our media to share this great information.
Associate Miller?
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Gray, yes. I'm not sure when or whatever, but yeah, we'll release this to the media.
Likely tomorrow. Thank you. I see no other speakers on this, so thank you very much, Tim, for coming out and presenting that information. Again, it's fantastic, and thank you for pulling it together for us. And associate Miller, thank you. Have a good night. Our next item is annual operational plan update system. Director DiWali, presentation.
Thank you, chairperson. This is the third edition of our series on the operational plan. Just to make trustees aware, we're guided in Halton by a multi-year plan, which is a set of goals that, and together with targets, that the board hopes to achieve over a five-year period. To supplement that plan, each year, the board produces an operational plan, and the difference... And the difference between an operational plan and a multi-year plan is the operational plan is a set of strategies that are consistent with the goals of the, the multi-year plan. Last year, we, we changed our strategy in terms of reporting back to the board. Rather than report on the operational plan once in a lengthy presentation, we've chosen to present three times, and this is the third of our, third of our presentation. We presented information on the first two, on students and staff. The third aspect of our operational plan is on system. And that's what you're going to be presented with today. And I'll take you through just the first couple of slides and my colleagues on admin council will carry us the rest of the way as soon as we get caught up. The first goal within system is an integrated proactive and strategic communications with the board's initiatives and achievements in order to increase public confidence in, in our board. And our goal, our strategy this year was to look at our communications in general. And we were assisted in that thanks to the efforts of trustees who decided that to assist us in our communication plan to conduct the communications audit. So we received that audit back and we've been working on some of the strategies within that, that communications audit. One of the big strategies that was suggested is a revamping of our corporate website. We have used available dollars, and there were many, to begin this process of analyzing our website to see what changes would have to be made in order to make it more user-friendly, but also to have it comply with the AODA legislations in terms of having it in a format that is accessible to all. So Marnie, Detton, and Gail and I have been looking at that. And we expect, you, you can expect to see a costing within the budget to do a formal revamping of our website and have it in place in the early part of next year. And we've learned a lot from comments the trustees have made. And we've learned a lot from comments that, that the public have made as well. The second strategy there was sharing student and school successes. And I think, is it, you bringing the motion in? No. The committee was struck to look at this. And there'll be some motions coming to the board in the very near future on actions that will be recommended to the board in terms of recognizing student and staff achievement. In addition, we have stepped up our, our recognition program. You'll know that it usually is part of, of the director's report at least once a month. The director gives a good news report where we cites student achievement. That's followed up by a card from the director and the trustee of the school. We also tweet that information and, and do press releases for significant events as well. So we believe that recognizing student achievement is an important issue. We actually have some numbers, yeah.
Since Marnie compiled these and wanted them shared as a validation of the student success that we have promoted since September, so these numbers are just since September 2014. There have been more than 50 news releases issued. There have been 315 tweets sent out since October 2014, which interestingly enough is nearly double the number of tweets since we began tweeting in February 2012. The spotlight on schools, which you'll see in the center of our webpage, is dynamic and is updated at least once, if not twice a week. And we have had 61 brief stories and photos since last fall. That does not include the nine in-depth stories that were featured in the December 2014 issue of Education Matters, which covered things like MM Robinson's Native Studies Art Course, computer coding at River Oaks, a flipped classroom method happening in Milton, a Bronny Creek Project, PIC, Reach Program, all kinds of other in-depth items that if you haven't already read, you may want to go back and look at. And the interesting number that I found out of all of this, and I think it surprised Marnie as well, the email and phone messages sent to parents through our home notification system since July 2014, including attendance messages, totals 3.9 million. There you go.
So that's what you've been doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that is a lot of messaging. And I guess lastly, another action taken in order to, to look more closely at, at our communications, and this was also alluded to in our communications audit, was that the, the auditor said the most important communication is communications from school. Because parents look at that, that's their first contact with the board. So to reflect on that and to action that item, the board appointed, assigned the responsibility of school communication to Superintendent Etoff. And Superintendent Etoff has been doing an excellent job at, at assisting schools with their communications home as well. The next slide is again on the communications plan, but it deals more specifically with the technology. And then I'll let Bruce speak to this issue.
Good evening trustees, and as you can see, there's a number of other initiatives related to the system goal regarding communications. This year, we started a process of looking at school websites. And our strategy was to look for a different type of solution. We've gone out, looked at the marketplace, and we've selected a product called Edsby, which is a web portal that can be used by staff, students, and parents. Currently, we have this running at two of our schools, Stewart Town and WH Morden. We're about to provide access as well at White Oaks. And we'll be evaluating the, how well this tool is working in those schools. And we'll have more to report later this school year on its success. But the hope is that this will become the way of providing information through a website as well as providing, I would say, more detailed information to parents. The second innovation is there, and I know you're quite aware of the boardroom technology. We are certainly very close to completing this. The last piece is home access, both for voting and to be on the speaker's list so trustees can participate fully from either home or, or at a conference, et cetera. I want to thank Jeff Bowman and, who's one of our staff members, as well as Chris from Hamilton Video and Sound for getting us to this point. I think we've seen a lot of benefits from this. And as we complete the work, I think we'll greatly benefit in, in these meetings as well as other meetings that we have, not only efficiencies here, but we'll have the ability to stream, et cetera, so that others can either participate or see what's going on. And now I'm going to ask Superintendent Cullen to comment on the facility services items.
Under the second goal of the system, we have the facility services will continue to monitor and review the nature of disruptions to classrooms. Our goal here really was to see that we try not to impact classroom or lose time in classrooms. I can say that we have been tracking and reporting these. And for the most part, the failures that we tend to see relate to either water main failures or hydro failures that are unrelated to our infrastructure. But having said that, that doesn't mean they're beyond our control. We do have 24-hour-a-day, seven-day response teams that can come out and liaise with those utility companies. The worst thing we can do is close a school because of a lack of knowledge and then find out that within an hour they've got it fixed and we could have had the kids in. So it, it's not just about fixing some of the things, it's also about potentially communicating. So we, we are continuing to address that, that nature of failure in classroom spaces. To continue the renewal, I think in itself, we've recognized and acknowledged that the renewal approach has been a relatively successful method of dealing with these types of issues in, in schools. And trustees will probably recall that our Close the Gap is focused at some of these issues, as is the school condition improvement funding that's come from the ministry, which again, the ministry has increased the dollar amount and enhanced that. So we hope to be able to do more with less or more with more in this particular case. Acting on the approved projects for Close the Gap, hopefully trustees will recall that we've taken the first report on the Close the Gap list with the priorities. We'll be bringing back a, an update to trustees on some of those projects before the school year is out this year to give everybody an indication as to where we are and how we're progressing. Several of those initiatives were spread out over two years. And we again are still hoping for additional funds to subsidize the Close the Gap in future years. The health and safety items, this item was noted because there are deadlines and timelines within the health and safety regulations that we have to conform to. So we constantly remind people that a timely response to health and safety items is a requirement. And I can say that we continue to monitor those. And I don't believe there are any recorded incidents of missing deadlines on that particular item. Thank you.
The system focus also has a number of technology-related initiatives. The first one does fall under my portfolio, which is records management. And about a year ago, we hired a records manager who has started to move us towards, I would say, a more formalized records management strategy. We are building a record center at New Street. We have also been using a third party to store some of our longer-term content. We have developed a records management strategy and we're also developing a number of procedures. So we are not only trying to look at our paper records, our records manager is also assisting us with our electronic information, which I'm sure you can appreciate is the majority of our content and in time will become probably all of our content. We also have an initiative that's looking at rolling out funding. And I wanted to give you some of the numbers that are associated with the rollout that the board approved about two years ago. So we currently have 100% access, wifi access in all of our instructional areas, which includes our portable classrooms. We have experienced that number, 37,000 devices online on our network at one time, of which we have 27,000 board-owned devices. And I can assure you, not all 27,000 were turned on at that point. So we have a number of students that are using and bringing their devices to schools. Part of our funding formula provides up to 25% additional funding to needier schools. And that last number you can't see there is we're in year two of a five-year rollout. So we're still anticipating three more years of technology rollout. Associated with that is our Bring It Initiative. And our Bring It Initiative is about bringing your own device to school. We have a formalized target of 60%. And by the end of June, we will have identified 29% of our classrooms at our Bring It classrooms. And by that, those include teachers that have been trained. We provided the equipment that's listed there. I expect, and I know we have many more classrooms than that, but those are the ones that you have funded through this initiative. And of course, schools have certainly shown the initiative in the past and continue to show the initiative to provide devices for teachers, document cameras, mounted data projection, and other types of training. So this, this is a very good news item for the board. Associated with that, we have a number of software tools that we've started to use for groups of students. We now have Dreambox Math available to all of our grade four students. And the hope there was that we would ensure that students use technology to assist in their learning. And the one way to ensure that is to provide a tool that we know all students are going to use. So Dreambox Math has been very helpful to our math program. We've also piloted this year something called Civic Mirror, which you can see is a simulation-based program that we use in civics. And we're planning to roll that out board-wide as well next year. Lastly, the board has heard from staff and received an update on digital citizenship. It was brought to the board in February. The board is well aware of the internet filtering that we started in January. And, and I've heard very positive things. I have not heard of any instances of over-filtering, which I think was a concern with the technology. We have been training our IT contacts with the digital citizenship curricula that we've, we've received and the resources that we've received. And we are in, in the process of developing a social media procedure where we're talking about the various tools that are available. And we plan to have that to admin council, I would say, sometime in the spring. And then from there, we would hope to implement sometime in the next few months so it is made available to the system. So I'm now going to ask Associate Director Miller to talk about our fourth goal in the system.
So you can see up there in the slide, Teacher Leadership and Learning Project. And I think the significant part about this is this is really a program that allows teachers to, and school administration. But it, it, the impetus and the initiation most frequently comes from teachers. And they submit projects, 40 of them. We've got $50,000 for this current school year in our budget to support these programs or these projects. And you can see up there the ones we've done. And, well, and I'll just give you an indication of a couple of this, of some of the schools and what, and the intent behind it. The intent behind these innovation projects is that ultimately they can become practice. They can become what goes on in that school and beyond. At the end of them, at the end, roughly around the end of the school year, they have a day where everybody presents their projects and, and the other schools are there. And so it's almost a sharing of best practices. And if we look up there, there's a couple of schools, Folgerwood and Montclair, they did something called Genius Hour, and that's an hour a week. Some, it usually extends more because of the enthusiasm of kids, where they basically do whatever they want. And they produce videos, they, you know, it's guided by the students. And there's been some pretty powerful videos. There was one in particular around anti-bullying that they produced. Other schools like Bruce, Bruce T. Lindley, they did something on Aboriginal education and restorative justice, which is an important thing to introduce into the younger ages. Tigerjeet Singh did something around training all teachers around sensory activities to support those kids that have those. So those are just a few of the examples of, of some of those innovation projects. And the ministry has been interested in a few of them. And they've actually asked for those and they've been presented. And as I've said, they, the intent is that this is best practices, it's innovative practices, and this information is shared among staff. So, so the two keys to that is that it's generally teacher-initiated and then teacher-spread as well, so.
I'm now going to ask Superintendent Beerman to contact on the financial goals.
Certainly throughout the year, we did update our fundraising guideline. The ministry did provide a template that was recommended to be used by boards. So we have taken that information and updated our admin procedure or the fundraising guideline for use at the schools. The ministry is also indicating, or had also indicated that they would provide direction with respect to corporate sponsorship. That has not happened at this point in time. So we will be updating our procedure to ensure that we provide direction to the schools and to our community with respect to corporate sponsorship. We also had a pilot, have a pilot for electronic, electronic funds transfer in place. We are targeting to begin the pilot later on in the year to ensure that we're able to maximize our payable system by paying our vendors electronically.
And I'm now going to ask Superintendent Zahnfeld to speak.
So this final goal that you see here is around, it's, it's part of our multi-year mental health strategy that we have in place and are in the middle of. And really in recognition of the wraparound supports that we need to provide to students and families that are in need of mental health supports. And so you can see the various agencies there. We won't read through all of them, but you can see them there that we partner with in supporting students. And all of these are multi-agency in turn, in their nature. And we play a significant role in, at all of these tables in doing this work. And all of this is part of that, those supports for families.
Madam Chair, that is our report. And I think we're certainly open to any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions tonight for any of our speakers? I don't see any, but I'd like to make a comment. Did you want to say something?
No.
There's, we have seen a lot of things happening over the last few years. And, and, and when we develop the strategy- When we developed the strategic plan back in 2012, we had some ideas. And now the ideas are coming to fruition. And it's really exciting to see this and seeing the impact that's happening on the students. And I'd like to thank staff for the hard work to make it happen because I think that it's the commitment from senior admin and everyone else that's involved with it that, to make it happen and to make it a better place for students. So thank you very much, everybody. Did you want to say something, Director Yarvin?
No, just that the next, that completes our review of the operational plan for '14, '15. The next thing will be for the board to entertain a plan for '15, '16, which is the last year of the multi-year plan. And hopefully, that plan will get us to most of our targets. It's not going to get us to all of our targets. I mean, a good plan creates ambitious targets. And if you have ambitious targets, you're bound not to hit every one of them. But we've had substantial success. So look forward to in the next couple of months or a month and a half to seeing an operational plan for '15, '16.
Thank you very much. We will look forward to seeing it. Thank you very much to everyone who presented tonight as well. So our next item is portable updates from Superintendent Cullen. Report 15049 on page 19 of your board package. Superintendent Cullen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This report is an ongoing and repeat report. So I think it's simplest to just simply take any questions that trustees might have about any specific location.
Thank you. We have Vice Chair Collard with a question.
I always look forward to your portable inspection report. And I especially look forward to seeing that my schools have no suspect mold or moisture. But I was wondering if the report could perhaps just list the schools and then tell us where the problems were instead of having hundreds and hundreds of portables listed and 99 to some, most of the time, 100% of them have no issue whatsoever. I'm wondering if we could abbreviate the report so that it's not quite so hard to find your school and which portable has what problem.
That is an excellent suggestion. It actually might relate to a conversation we've recently had in the office. We've been doing this this way a long time, and it's starting to become a little dated around the technologies that are available to us. One of the things that we're attempting to do is now, in addition to just simply have that report that says, here's what we found. Well, where's the associated work order that was issued? Who did the subsequent work and wasn't in fact closed? A little bit more of a closed-loop cycle, if you will. We're looking at that as sort of an online mechanism that we could do that, which would then mean we would have the ability, as would trustees, to be able to simply go in, look up that particular portable, whether it's by school or by portable number, and be able to sort of track its history or activity in a much easier way and probably a more interactive way, which would probably be more useful. The other issue we've run into is if we try to get a report on a portable, so right now, what you've got is all the portables this month and all the portals next month and so on. But tell me the history of that particular portable. Where has it been? What has it been through, those types of things? So we're looking at trying to make a bit of a change to that reporting and documenting mechanism that might be, I think, a little more interactive and more informative as far as that process goes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Pappen.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Cullen. My question has to do with the portables at Lester B. Pearson. I do notice there is mold in one of the portables. But my question has to do with whether they're being used or not and if there's any chance they will be used in the future. And if they're not, are there plans to move them, relocate them?
Through the chair, to trustee Pappen. The portables at Lester B. Pearson are a little bit unique. If you've been to the site and seen the setup over there, they're not individual freestanding portables like most of our others. They were probably the earliest version of what we refer to as a porta pack. And it was literally 10 individual portables that were shipped to the site, clustered together, and then had a common roof put over them. So it was really an evolution in design around how they should or shouldn't be done. They were used for many years. They're currently not in use. The school has, as of this school year, moved all of the student population into the building, not to do necessarily with any issues with the portables, but just to keep them within the confines of a bricks-and-mortar building was more suitable, and the population allowed that to occur. We are still maintaining them. The issue normally, when we don't require a portable on a school site, we would remove it. That's, you know, one of the things we do. We put them on, we take them off. Because of the way these 10 are linked and configured together, it really isn't a viable option to take some of them out. It would leave the rest of the building literally exposed, and we'd have to rebuild that facade or outside exterior to put it back into play. We are considering taking them all off. So if we can confirm that they're not going to be needed for any purpose for the long term, we would simply remove the entire group. And I suspect that would mean not relocate, but rather demolition. They would probably just, it'll be taken down off of that site. I'm pretty sure, based on the construction dates, it's 20 years or better that they've been on that particular occasion. So they've served their purpose and served it well. So we are looking at that option to potentially remove them right from the site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
Good through you, Chair, to Superintendent Cullen. Thank you again for this report. I have a comment and then two questions. So first, I'd like to say that I really appreciate the history from where this report came about, and there is a history to it. What I'm wondering at this point is whether or not we need to see these reports as frequently as what they do. So my first question will be to Superintendent Cullen, just to comment on that in general, if you wish. And also, if you could give us an idea of the staff time that might be involved in putting together this lengthy report for us. And then my second question will be to my fellow trustees, or perhaps just a comment. But I'm always aware of the level of detail that we should be getting into with these things. And I think we've seen in the news through things at TDSB and so on that there are certain levels that trustees should be involved in. And I wonder if we should be involved in these reports at this level. As trustee Collard said, I would really appreciate even just seeing the summary, say, twice a year with a list of those schools that did have issues. And me personally, I don't need to see the full report. So I'll let Superintendent Cullen speak if he wishes. And then I would invite comments from trustees on that issue. Thank you.
Through the chair, to trustee Graves. Thank you. There's a couple of things wrapped up in that comment. Oddly enough, the frequency with which we inspect the portables came about because of several meetings that took place between the board, a group of parents, and the medical officer of health at the time that this whole issue was present in Halton. And there really weren't any prescribed protocols. So there was no guideline that said thou shalt or, you know, be a good idea to do them two months, three months, whatever. So the frequency of our inspections is really what drives the frequency of our reports, if you kind of follow that process through. We've examined the data that we've seen in the tables from time to time to see whether or not the two-month inspection frequency is too frequent. Like, does it really need to be? Some boards do their portables once a year, some do it twice a year, you know, those types of things. They don't do them to the same degree as we do. So there really still isn't a standard in the industry that's been accepted or acknowledged as suitable. Ours, in my opinion, I can safely say that ours is safe. We're very confident that our portables are inspected on such a frequency and to such a degree that there's very little chance of a student ever having an issue, or a staff member for that matter, having any health-related issues as a result of being in a portable. So I think that's a fairly safe statement to make. How much longer could we stretch out those inspections and still achieve that? I don't think we're totally certain of that, but it is something we've talked about on many occasions. Your other comment about the frequency of the report and the nature of the report, the inspections are almost continuous. So you can imagine the time it takes to inspect roughly 300 portables is really the full two-month cycle from start to finish. So the consultant that's doing this work is really, never stops the process. They're literally doing them all the time, which means some of the inspections were done two months ago. By the time we prepare a hard copy of the report and the cycle is virtually complete, we bring them to admin council for review, we put them in the board package. So they are somewhat out of date as far as that goes. We have talked about that. And I think that gets to trustee Collard's comments about there might be a different mechanism to do that and have a live database that, as they're inspected, they're literally reported on and available for people to see the results because really, that's what it's about. If we found mold in a portable, we'd react to it, you know, virtually immediately. Having the report two months or three months later really might not lend itself to that particular issue. So I think in response to trustee Collard's comments, we are looking at a different way that may take us out of having the hard copy report and therefore having the need to do them in this fashion at all.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Through you, Chair, to Superintendent Cullen. I appreciate the rigorous inspection process that we have for the portables. I'm glad to see that in place. Looking at the summary results on page 19, there are a number, there are a couple of portables listed as having minor suspect mold or moisture. And it does not say that they are not unoccupied like the Lester B. Pearson. So I'm wondering what happens in cases like that? If you could briefly outline for us.
Certainly. When the consultant that does this work finds something, and again, it's an environmental consultant. When I say consultant, it's not a home inspector or building. This is actually an environmental consultant that has expertise in the areas of, I'll say, health and some of the issues related to that. If they find any circumstance that they felt warranted immediate reaction, they call our office immediately. They're on cell phone, they get to us. We can issue staff to get out there right away. I don't think I'm, I can't even remember a circumstance where that has occurred, again, because of the frequency of the inspections. They will report them, particularly if it's what they call suspect mold. We've kind of moved past testing and confirming that it's mold. If they think it's mold, if it looks like mold, we simply just assume it isn't treated as mold. And as such, we put the right, I'll say, protective equipment in place and the steps to deal with those issues. If it's moisture, the reason we detect, or sorry, are so interested in the moisture is it leads to mold. So obviously, get the leak fixed before it turns into mold is the far more, I think, fiscally responsible and health-responsible way to do it. So that's what happens there as well. So many of the items are reported immediately. If there's an immediate response in their opinion necessary, the others are simply reported on the report to say, you know, we're going to have to get the maintenance people out to put some caulking in or, you know, change the screws or tighten them or do those things. So the response varies depending on their observation on the site. And then either our staff or contractors go out. So they all, all the responses, all the calls or observations come into our department. And we have one staff member who distributes those to either our staff or contractors, depending on the magnitude of the work. Our staff in-house, we don't have tradesmen, like, we don't have the formal trade certificate staff. We have handymen, a series of them that can go do most of the things related to this. But in many cases, it's actually a contractor that we put in place to do that work.
Go ahead.
Follow-up question to that. So for mold remediation or the moisture remediation or repair, what, when is that done? And how does that affect the students in the classroom? And how do you ensure that the methods are safe from a health perspective?
Good, excellent question. We have a procedure that relates to the abatement of mold. So if it were, again, not confirmed mold but suspect mold, so we treat it as mold, the abatement protocols for the mold are all documented. It is a regulated substance, so it's not just our internal process that does that. There actually is a requirement to do so. So that's what's followed in those cases. That would, in almost all cases, be done by a contractor that's qualified to work in that field. In the cases where it's our own staff, in most cases, we use our own staff when it's an after-hours or something that we'd have to get in when the students, if we have to kind of fit it between the nutrition break or lunchtime or those kinds of things where it works out, we've got more flexibility around the hours of our staff to do that than the contractors. It doesn't make sense to have them sit and wait for those opportunities to do those things. So again, it really depends on the nature of the issue. We've had cases where it might lead to taking out some of the interior drywall paneling off the wall to get into the wall, to fix it, to put it back together. Those things would be done when students aren't in the area. We wouldn't have students in the space when that has occurred.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Superintendent Cullen. And I guess also, to some extent, answering part of trustee Graves' question. The level of detail, there's a lot of history behind this and a lot of parental requests and information that the trustees could have at their fingertips to say, yes, your portables are fine. And we could point to a listing and say that here, this is your schools. These are fine, they've been tested. And also that if people, portables being accessible to the public on weekends, they walk by and they see basically what ends up in the report saying, you know, there's a little hole or whatever, then we can also show that, yes, we noticed that, we've got it fixed, and it didn't show up in the next report. So it's sort of a follow-up procedure. Saying that, though, I like the idea that I'm hearing about a more live database, about an idea of being able to say, you know, your student's going into portable number four. What's the history of that portable? It's fine, everything's fine. Or if there is an incident and somebody thinks the portable's causing them issue, we can say, but this portable's never had any issue. Those kinds of things, new technology would be a much better thing. One of the questions I have is whether or not the process for how we do this and when we report is easily accessible in an admin procedure that a parent could then see. Like, if we're going to change the frequency of the reporting process to the trustees, then I would like to see the corresponding admin procedure that says, this is what we do with the portables, and this is how your trustees can check for you. So that if it's no longer going to be a public document with a, every two months, your portable shows up and, yes, you know it's clear, then the public will know how to get the information the other way and how the trustees get the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gavins.
I want to say that I agree with trustee Graves about the level of detail. We don't need this kind of level of detail. But I, not brought to the board at a meeting, I do believe that a more interactive tool that even, might even be accessed by the public, might be the way to go. We don't need to be the conduit for absolutely every little detail between our parents and what's happening, you know, in a portable.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, in part to answer trustee Harvey Hope's question, or in part of it, we do have an admin procedure. And I have it up here. It's, the topic is portable mold inspection program. And at the very bottom of that one, so it outlines in detail everything pertaining to how the inspections are done. And the very last item, it said a bi-monthly summary report to the chair and members of the Halton District School Board to include report and update of intrusive and non-intrusive. I assume that'd be something to you. So, I mean, my sort of thoughts would be, using our parliamentary procedures lingo, would be to, what was it, strike the word monthly and substitute it annually, biannually, report. So all of this, the inspections would still be done in the same way. And I have full confidence in Superintendent Cullen and his staff that, you know, all of this will be done. Just the other report coming to the trustees would be biannual instead of bi-monthly. Oh, sorry, semi-annual, right? Twice a year, every six months? That's, that was my thought.
Thank you. Well, maybe that's something that needs to be discussed PB and G because it's a policy or a procedure. Oh, it's an admin procedure, so it's staff. So they have to, they would. So Superintendent Cullen's heard some feedback, and he is capable of changing an admin procedure. I didn't see a smile.
Which I would never do without letting you know in this particular case. This has been a, this one had some history in its evolution, so we would certainly want to communicate. But I think the technologies have allowed us to look at some other options.
And I believe I've lived through some of that history. The next item is also Superintendent Cullen, the capital update. Report, whoop, sorry, I missed somebody. Sorry, I'm backing up a step. Still on portable inspections with Superintendent Cullen and it's trustee Gavins.
I just wanted to kind of put a seed in people's minds that a report like this might be good for a consent agenda.
That has come up before. Okay, thank you. The next topic is capital update with Superintendent Cullen, report 15050 on page 30 of your board package. Superintendent Cullen, the Superintendent Cullen hour?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I switched chairs so it would look like a different report. Actually, the reason I switched chairs is I believe it was the chair last meeting commented that the drone videos hadn't been updated, so for your viewing pleasure... Can we get, oh, look at this. Well done, Jeff. We're not going to play the audio though on this one, Jeff? Thank you. Okay. I can, while you're watching the charming, this is Milton number nine, by the way. So this is the Milton School that is just south of Louis Saint Laurent. It is, as you can see, well underway. What you're looking at is the interior of the second floor. There's no roof on this at the moment. Those open web joists that you see will accept a metal pan that creates the roof and then cement gets poured on top of that. So that's the stage of that one. I'll talk about the other school, a little different technique in a moment. You can see Milton exploding to the background, which is an interesting observation because when we look at the other school, there is no neighborhood near it. So that's one of the main differences between...
I hope we're looking north.
We are, you are looking north at the moment. Yes.
And by the way, it's called Boyne Public School?
That's a good one. That actually is Louis Saint Laurent, that the school doesn't actually face on it, it butts, but it actually faces the east. It will be facing the side street, which is Farmstead in this particular case. So the contractor has really put on a lot of effort. The reason you don't see any bodies here at the moment, this film was shot on a Sunday. So hopefully, they've, they've been taking their day off rest and doing that, but they are working. There was 20, in excess of 20 masonry workers on site the last time they were there. There's a bit of a look to the open field east of the site and there's really nothing yet to the south, so. I'm going to jump, I don't think it's too much more in this particular footage, but you can see the state of the building as it sits right now. If I jump ahead to Oakville. Where are the houses? That's a good question, as the trustee from Milton says. Milton would never allow this to happen. They'd have houses on all those streets. You can actually begin to see some of the infrastructure that has started in the vicinity of the school. So those little padded down things are actually all the roads that will be filled with houses, we think, very, very soon. I still do not understand why the streetlights go in. I'm going to solve that mystery yet. There's nothing else in the neighborhood except streetlights at the moment. Maybe it's a security thing. This school is built in a slightly different fashion. This is using precast concrete decking. So where you saw the other school open to the interior, this one actually now has the roof on it, the roof structure. It's not the actual water type membrane, but the actual structure is in place. This is a precast concrete design. So those slabs come in precast from the manufacturer and get set in place by a crane. So it's a fairly speedy process as opposed to the labor-intensive version that goes with the other one. That is the gym in the middle. It's not a courtyard, so it will get a roof. The walls go up a little bit higher and then the roof goes on. Anyway, this is our northeast Oakville number one. You will see some houses off to the, I believe at the moment, that's probably facing west of the existing building, but immediately around the school, you can see we still have no real paved roads. Servicing is getting to us, not quite there yet, and the houses will be coming soon if history repeats itself, as I'm sure it will in this particular area. One of the advantages, you can see the stacks of skids that are set around the building. They literally can run a tow motor around on those precast slabs to deliver those blocks to the locations that they need. So it looks like a little beehive of activity when they get going. So that should be one of the newest updates. This was actually shot on March the 29th, I believe it was.
Thank you. I did go back and watch the other one from November to, I believe it was the end of February and I saw the progress, so it was kind of exciting. And I drove by the other day and I saw it and I thought, gee, should I try and drive it? And I thought, no, I don't want nails in my...
No. I got a flat last week just doing exactly that, so it does happen.
So we will break ground and cut the ribbon at the same time, right?
Yes, that's correct.
The students will arrive.
Thank you for sharing those. That's exciting.
And in addition to that, I'd be happy to take any questions related to other projects, but those are the two new school construction projects that we are most focused on at the moment. We're also working very diligently on the Martin Street. We'll have an update for that one, hopefully for the next board meeting. We had an open house two weeks ago, just before the March break, and that has had several different things occur on that, but that will be a formal report in much more detail at that point in time. And if there are any other questions related to other projects, I'd be happy to address those.
And there are. Trustee Graves.
Through you to Superintendent Cullen, I was just wondering if those videos are posted somewhere publicly for the public to view because they're really neat.
Through the chair to trustee Graves, yes, they are. If you go onto the board's website under, I think there's two different places you can actually find them, under the Facility Services section, there's always an ongoing construction project list and you can get to the link that way. I believe these ones are also on the, the two schools have sort of a more prominent position in the front page that you can link through and as the chair indicated earlier, they may have been labeled November, but that was the start of the project because the date comes up as the start of the video and it literally has each successive video attached to it as we go through. Okay? If you have any difficulty finding it, let us know, we'll point you to the right spot. But they are on the public website, the public can view these as well, which is again why I say we, we take the contractor, the contractor is actually the one shooting most of this film footage and he's quite creative, as you saw by some of his little add-ins, we've had to edit some things out, so we do look at them before they go public.
You haven't used your drone yet?
I have and I'm pleased to report that after the first two minutes of flight, I took out the first propeller, which is why they give you a spare. Yeah, I think we've learned our lesson. So actually, Mike Wildfong and I are project supervisor and I are going out tomorrow to hopefully do a Martin Street version and Milton nine. We'll get an update on Milton nine as well.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Superintendent Cullen, just a question on, under new school construction, the elementary school design doesn't have a name and I was wondering what that was.
That is, in theory, what will become Milton number 10. So at this point in time, we haven't officially received a new allocation for another school to construct, other than the two that are underway. We realized at the time that gave us an opportunity to revisit a whole host of different things that have been occurring in the schools, particularly around full-day kindergarten and some technology issues. So we're doing a design, a generic design review of all the components of the last four or five builds to see that we've got a number of those different things reviewed and vetted in the event that we get the approval to build Milton number 10. It would be our hope to incorporate that into it. I can briefly say that in looking at the overall scope of an elementary school, they're getting upwards of 800 pupil places. Things like parking and paving and the building footprint are really starting to consume the site and we're starting to look at other versions of the three-story. So we built a three-story elementary in the Alton Village location and I think another version of a three-story is probably going to be somewhere in the near future.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Yes, through the chair to Superintendent Cullen, does the funding that we receive for new builds accommodate environmental lead construction capacity?
Through the chair to trustee Gray, the way the funding allocation works is the ministry about, I'm going to, probably about three or four years ago, pulled a number of different school boards together and said, okay, what are the generic components that really make up a school? So what should a school cost based on a number of those different things? And if you can imagine, in our particular case, because of our larger populations and density of real estate, we're building a seven to eight hundred pupil place school. That's very different than another school board that might have an urban, or sorry, a rural setting where they can at best maybe get two to 300 students. They still need a gym, they still need a library, they still need an office. So there's a number of things that have to be there. So the ministry did a fairly decent job of itemizing the components to come up with the budget that they would provide to a school board. Once they have done that, the board's pretty much on its own to spend the money pretty much as they wish. Now, you can't apply for a 300 pupil place school and then only build a 200. The ministry wouldn't allow that. But once you've got the funding for a 300 pupil place school, you have to stay within that funding, build that school with the components that you've identified. I would say that that model did not consider lead as a, an itemized component that they priced. Some boards will shift some of their priorities from one area of the building to another and might focus on that. For the most part, I'm not familiar with too many of the boards that are doing lead, but we're all doing what we call lead-like-ish items. I think I referred to the Gardener School during one other conversation where we did do a lead silver. A lot of learning comes from that that can get applied without having to incur the same costs. A lot of the cost in the lead process is as a result of the investigation that has to take place by the lead certification or lead certifier that will at the end of the process say, yes, you did do all of these different things. So it's a premium cost on top of the regular cost. We tried to convince several different bodies that if we were building multiple schools, in this case, we've built the same floor plan three or four times over, why would we have to incur that cost over again? Well, if you want to have the plaque, if you want to have the certification, if you want to have the, you know, glitz and glamour that goes with it, there's a pretty significant fee goes that. I would estimate on an elementary school, even in a repeat circumstance, it's probably upwards of $300,000. So we've foregone that premium cost, put some of the issues in and we certainly do. The ministry did include things like high-efficiency systems, whether that be the boilers or air handling systems or those types, certainly on the control systems and lighting systems were key elements that. Drainage, water control, water management, very significant, very important in those particular settings. So those are fundable, but the ministry doesn't say what you spend your money on. We have a lot of flexibility in regard to that locally.
Thank you very much. And seeing no other speakers on this, I'd just like to let Superintendent Cullen know that there is a drone filmmaking course at Humber in April. It teaches you how to fly as well as take pictures, so you may be interested.
PB, thank you for that remedial comment.
Thank you for your presentations tonight. The next item up is board reports, updates, Director Uwali, report 15052 on page 33 of your board package.
Thank you, Chairperson. I'm happy to report and update this document for you and you can, we can see that there are many more indications of completed than items not attended to as yet. I think there's maybe only 10 or 12 reports that are due to the board for the end of the year. However, many of them are substantial like LTAP and the budget, et cetera, but we're making good progress. The only change I have for tonight is if you take a look at special education plan, it's marked as due on April the 15th and I think trustees are aware that we have a brand-new SEAC this year and it's taken a while for SEAC to, to come together and to build a plan. So I'm, I would like to move that to May the 6th. That's the only change I can foresee at this time.
Are there any questions or comments for the director? Vice Chair Collard.
I know that as one of the trustees on SEAC, this was discussed at SEAC, that the changes to the plan this year would be a little bit later in the schedule, so I know that SEAC will be amenable to that coming a little bit later.
Thank you. I see no, oh, Superintendent Zonoffeld.
Actually, just speaking with the chairs of SEAC, we're looking to finalize any revisions to the plan on May the 5th, which is the, that's our SEAC meeting for that month. So instead of the 6th, would be okay if it came to the board on the 20th? Just, just in terms of our, we only have two meetings and our revisions will be very minimal this year. It's basically minor editing. We've agreed as a group to do a very high-level review this year.
I'm going to have to consult with Superintendent Veerman because we have a, we have a motion on our, on record that we must receive the SEAC plan and the operational plan prior to any deliberations of, or not prior to deliberations, prior to the passing of the budget. That may be fine, we'll have to take a look at it.
Oh, it'll be changed to May 20th then?
If possible.
All right, so we're now up to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? We do, we have a few. Trustee Gray.
Yes, through the chair to the trustees, I'd like to report on the recognition committee. To review, the recognition committee was created to investigate a strategy to recognize the achievements of staff and students and others who support student achievement in the Alton District School Board. The committee met earlier today to review a draft document created by trustee Al Harrison as a result of our last committee meeting. This document will undergo further review in preparation for bringing the recommendation of the committee to one of the upcoming board meetings. Many thanks go to trustee Al Harrison and also for the upcoming specialized work of Gail Gortmaker. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. So Communications Committee met this week, last night in fact, from trustee Al Harrison and myself. We just want to thank trustees for their diligent work on our terms of reference and we're looking forward to our next meeting, which we have adjusted the date. And I believe that's coming from our Chair Kelly Amos.
That's correct. So it's being flipped with budget?
Yes. Thank you.
Next up is trustee Danieli.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to thank trustees last night for braving the inner bowels of the school to find, find the program and accommodation committee meeting and also to Dominic Manzella for his excellent presentation to prepare us for receiving the LTAP. It was, it was really exceptionally well done and very much appreciated. I would also like to thank my colleagues, all those who did attend the Ontario Public School Board Association's Labor Relation Conference. For those of you who didn't, when I get my moment, I will be sending you all my notes and I would remind you of the upcoming Central West meeting for the Ospah region, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Are there any other committee reports tonight? Seeing none, we're up to the director's report.
Thank you, Chairperson. I have one official report to bring forward tonight and that is to, that I've been, received the resignation of Deborah McFadden as Executive Officers of Newman Resources and Deborah's last day of employment with our board was March 31st and she has begun her new employment with the Ontario Public School Boards Association as their advisor on labor relations, for the record.
And for the record, we're not happy.
No. You're not happy.
Do you have anything else to report?
No, that's it for tonight.
Thank you, I think.
Yeah.
Sure. Vice Chair Collard.
As much as losing Executive Officer McFadden is a loss to our board, I know it is a huge gain to the province and that her work will be reflected back on us, so we will, we will still benefit from the great work that she does.
Very true. Thank you. So now it's communications from the chair and I have a few things. Last week, trustee Gray and I both were privileged enough to go to HIAEX Women as Career Coaches and it was an awesome event and I sat at a table with some students from Lesterby Pearson High School and from the Georgetown Gary Allen High School and very diverse group of career coaches. It was a wonderful learning experience on both sides. A couple of the students said they didn't, didn't know what to expect when they came and they were blown away and wanted to come back next year already. So I would recommend anybody, if they can, to take advantage of it. It's a wonderful opportunity. You learn as well as share. Another item is our co-terminals board next week will be sharing a motion which will be coming to us at our next board meeting regarding the bell times efficiencies. And as you recall, I had at the HSTS Annual Planning and Consulting Consultant Meeting, I had... I had required if the Halton Catholic District School Board be interested in reviewing and modifying the school bell times to potentially identify further operational efficiencies. So after it was discussed around the table, there's a recommendation coming to both boards to try to identify the cost efficiencies in looking at a consortium-wide bell time review. So that will be coming to us at our next board meeting. And it's going to the Catholic Board next week for first read and then approval two weeks after that. Another item is unfortunately, we have to do an RFP to try and find a search firm for a new director. You sure you don't want to stay?
I'm going to do the search.
So we have had some staff who are working behind the scenes to help us. And I was going to suggest, I'm going to send out an email about, potentially later on Tuesday afternoon because staff will be involved, so unfortunately, it does have to be during the day. So I'll be sending out an email, so just FYI, so if you're available. Also, next week, there's two really big events going on. And if you're around, you should try and go. On Thursday, it's, both of them unfortunately are happening at the same time. The skills competition is happening at Craig Kilburger and I will be judging. So if you're coming, please come visit. I'm doing the seven and eight film and, yeah. And their mental health symposium is also that day. So unfortunately, I won't be able to get to that, but I hope some of your others will and will report back because I know it is a really good event. And I'm hoping that we can maybe get things scheduled so not all these big things happen on the same days within the system. Yes, there's too many big things happening. So that's all I can think of to report right now. So we're now up to trustees, questions and comments. Do we have any of those tonight? Trustee Gray.
Yes, through the chair, I'd like to report tonight that public school Ethel Gardner is going to have a renaming ceremony on April the 24th. And through the principal tonight, Deborah DeChastelin, I've been asked to just make mention of it to all members of senior admin and all trustees of the opportunity to participate in that celebration of that renaming. More information to follow through invitation, but I think it's important to note that date, April 24th. Thank you.
Thank you, and I know that many of us will want to be there. So thank you for sharing that. Next speaker is trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on my cheerleading of robotics last week, I thought maybe some of you might be interested to know that we had eight Halton teams that went up to North Bay. And while I was sitting at the OPSA conference, I managed to go online and watch a few. And there was a picture that was tweeted out of all eight Halton teams, very colorful because we have some yellows and some reds and some blues and black t-shirts. There was also a t-shirt that I believe the Halton Rob, um, system staff are wearing that had all the teams' names on the back, so that was kind of neat. They had a really good time. Garth Webb in particular, I believe, was the rookie team. So because of that, that buys them a buy-in to international. The OTHS Red Devils won the Entrepreneurship Award, which basically is your business plan and how you go about raising the money and, and that kind of thing. And I know the Burlington Central team, I was watching them like a hawk all weekend because they were really good. Their robot was doing a good job. But it's not just about how the robots do, it's also about how the teams do and their presentations for chairmans and, and all those other things. So if you're interested, I suggest that you follow my Twitter feed whenever there's a championship because I, I get kind of crazy about robotics for weekends. And at some point, I think I'm going to ask Dave Lewis to make a presentation to the board about what this program does for the school and the STEM system because you really see some good outflow from it. And it's not just because they won the game, so. But Halton was one quarter of the schools up in North Bay and they called it the Halton Takeover in their Twitter feed, so.
Thank you, and I believe that MM and Central and Georgetown became an alliance and finished fourth overall. Next up is Vice Chair Collard.
Just wanted to remind trustees that we are reconvening a private session at the conclusion. And so please don't leave.
Thank you, just when we thought you were almost done. Trustee Pappen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to congratulate Pauline Johnson Public School for being chosen among 80 schools across Canada to help celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Canada flag. As part of the Heritage Canada Hometown Project, more than 285 students, staff and community were selected to record Oh Canada on March 10th. The federal government awarded Hometown Music Council funds to support its project, Flag of Canada, Hometown Proud. And it involved voices of more than 25,000 students. I'd, I'd also like to say I've been asked to participate in the Halton District School Board Public Elementary Speaking Contest as a judge. And this will take place on Thursday, May the 14th at Brant Hills Public School. Thank you.
Wonderful. Trustee Reynolds.
Just a high five to Lakeshore Public School Principal Dusma Helyvich and his staff. Heard about an exciting event they put on, which was skills-focused. Did the design and technology and robotics and they included kids from K to six. So that was pretty cool. And they, they allowed the parents to come in and participate. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Graves.
Thank you, I just wanted to make a comment about our new video voice recording system and our voting system. I do know someone who watched the live stream last week and, so people are, no. She said we all looked great, just so you know. And I wanted to comment particularly on this, not only because I prefer this overseeing my, my face on the screen, but as someone who follows the boards, I don't, I don't get a hard copy of the package, I do it electronically. It saves me from scrolling back and forth between the agenda and the reports. So it's been really, really smooth. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone involved in that.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, can I have a motion to rise into private? Trustee Gray and trustee Pappen, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, we will convene in private session in five minutes.
So I will have to ask at this time for superintendents and for the gallery to please clear. Yes, Executive Officer Blackwell will stay. Thank you.